All right, so we'll stand and include the budget.
President Cook.
Hi.
The United States of America. And to the Republic, our official stance. One nation under our. In the middle of the world, with whatever shape you want.
Hey, this thing will do the roll.
I think Cook.
I'm here.
Vice President Dom.
Here.
Treasurer Prince.
Here.
Secretary Thomas.
I am here.
Trustee Everard.
Here.
Trustee Gayton. And Trustee Zimmerman.
President.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm gonna do the four point O, the conservation ethic. That's all number six. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our or our interest in nature. To develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues. And then to act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. And by conservation is towards certain towards to pledge. Chris, is your
Make a difference by staying up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. The quality of life in McHenry County depends on that. Healthy, sustainable, natural resources. Thoughtfully developed cities and towns. Strong economy and a beautiful outdoor place to cover and recreate.
And you can do no
Create opportunities for meaningful outdoor recreational experiences for people of all ages, cultures, and abilities.
Okay, thank you.
President Cook, it looks as if Trustee Gayton has joined us, but so he'll be participating in conversation. He just will not be able to vote. Unless unless you're not attending because of your illness or business related.
Hey, sorry, I'm late, everyone. That is not the case, so we will not be able to vote.
Appreciate your being on. All right, so six point O is adopting the agenda. I think you've all had a chance to look at talk about before we go ahead and None, Chrissy, would you call the rule?
We need a motion.
I'm on a
Okay, well, ask him to make the motion.
I'll second.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Yes, indeed. Okay, so seven point O, we have some special recognition presentations. And we have some veterans that we're recognizing, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years. So Elizabeth, would you like to do the honors?
I sure would. So we're gonna start off with our ten year service awards. And these individuals, they were recognized at our all staff that we had, and they're each given gift certificates based on years of service that's been our practice. And so celebrating ten years, we have two Cindy Jablonski, who is our wildlife ecologist, and then Adam Rex, who is our restoration ecologist. And congratulate them. They're out of the land preservation and natural resources system. Then celebrating fifteen years. Val Siler, who is our land administration and preservation manager, who's here in person this evening live. That's that. So congratulations, Val. Steve Stabinow, who is a park ranger with our operations planning and public safety team. And then Sergeant Ben Wolf, who's with our law enforcement team. And you probably, he's been with the district obviously for fifteen years, is known for many things that he brings, but also his motorcycle, him and Sergeant Stewart on their motorcycle championship, what they do for every event they had. So we're again congratulating them on their fifteen years of service. And then for twenty-five years, our silver, silver two here, we have Sarah Dunham, who is our wildlife resources manager, and then Amy Peters, who is our planning and development manager. So congratulate them on there.
Well, I think probably this is best, this is a reflection of the loyalty that people have to the district. And also, I think a reflection of a good job of what directors do because they provide opportunities for their staff to grow and develop. So I think everyone can feel good about this. Okay, seven point two, we're gonna put the spotlight on Christine Montagnia, who has become a certified municipal clerk. And perhaps just tell us briefly what that involves. And how you can help me if I get into municipality.
This is a certification, it's actually through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So it's an international certification that takes a few years. Anywhere from two to four years to obtain, because they calculate your experience in certain job categories, your education. And then, of course, with any other certification, you have to, you know, go to trainings and build up your points. And what it basically does is it's not just for municipal clerks, in case this position that I'm in is executive assistant. They work, basically, you just don't have that job title. But it still allows for you to obtain that certification. So when I first came to the district and worked for the police department, I kind of had to put that on hold because it didn't qualify for the position that I was in. And then when I moved to this position, it allowed me to obtain that, and Elizabeth was very supportive of that. So all I needed to do was have a few more months under the belt and submit my certification, and I got it.
So you're officially invaluable.
You know, it was several years, but I was just very happy that I was able to maintain it and achieve it.
Efforts, thank you. All right, now we're more recognitions. Recognition of the, all right, Park and Recreation Association Professional Development School graduates. And we have four, and who is gonna speak to that?
I will speak to this. So part of our succession planning and leadership development has been sending employees to different types of schools. This happens to be one of the best ones. It's a long running program in Illinois, where you are in the mix of all different types of fields, not just pure necessary trade of study, but to build those professional development schools to move up on the career ladder. And so what we started doing is inviting, there's a two-year program, and then you graduate here, and it's a very intense three-day program. They have to interact with other members across the state. And so this year, we had four graduates. They attended, this was their second year. And so we have Josh Critteran, who is our park ranger. Kalen Martinez-McBorder, who did receive her certification, then also she was recently promoted to our marketing manager position. Ben O'Day, who's our parks and plains supervisor, and then John Peters, who is our restoration ecologist. And I will say with John, we board of regions that run the school while he was there also looked to him, and they seek to pull in others to be on the board of regions. And John was selected as a very competitive process, and he will be on the board of regions, helping to steer the development school again, providing additional leadership opportunity. So we're really proud of all of them. We also had a first year. Kyle Ames, who was a mechanic too with us, attended first year. And then we're getting others and few, several other members that will continue to rotate this system. Or, you know, there's other schools out there too, but this is again a way to build that skill set to keep our employees, you know, growing in their field.
So one going to, what are they called, leads or when you go back to school after you graduate, you can go and lead others at the school?
Yeah, so they do have a graduate class, and then the board of regions kind of can come over there. So it does for those that come back, and it's always got great speakers that come in. But they've said they've had great things to say about it. And John Kramer, he's a graduate. I was a graduate of the program too, back in the day, a long time ago. But it's been around for quite some
So if any of them are listening in on Zoom, we'll give them a we will call that extra work. Eight point O, our trustee reports, do any of the trustees want to report on anything?
The the foundation didn't meet this month, so nobody there. The green drinks in December, I was in LA, so what did they tend it, but the green drinks program was unlike anything we've had before, was Japanese gift wrapping. Though I didn't feel bad I missed it, but it would have been interesting for other people. Apparently they use decorative cloth, and then we use it, and it's a special way they tie it, kind of origami type thing or something. Anyway, I missed it.
Any other trustees, well, that was about their Thanksgiving dinners. Ron, we're gonna ask you, or Shane, ask you to help, when we get to the RFP about the auditors, maybe you could make some remarks about it. All right, so next, Kelly, if there's anything from the county board.
Not a whole lot. So December fifth was our first meeting as a new board, and all of us were sworn in. We have eight incumbents and ten new people, so our board is now eighteen people instead of twenty-four. Then on the seventh, we met and had our committee on committees, which is basically the senior person from each district sits on this committee, and we decide who's going to be the chair, vice chair, and who's gonna be on each committee. And that will be voted on tonight. And the new people had two days, two days of training. So you absorb as much as you can of that information for three days. Bill to mention, the vice chair now of the county board is Joe Gavon. That's all I have.
So Elizabeth, at one point, we, the idea surfaced, and I guess it's looking at an old idea again, the question of getting together with new county board members, or perhaps some opportunity to meet with any county board member who wanted to get an update of what's going on in the district. You know, both from the county board's point of view, do you have a sense that might be helpful? Want to do it, give it more thought?
I think it would be helpful. Maybe give it a month or two, just while they're digesting all of this. But I think it would be really helpful. We don't know who's gonna be what liaison yet. We have not been told that Chairman Bueller chooses those. So we may find out tonight when we get to my desk. We may not
Is it possible we will lose you?
It's possible. I know there's other people that are vying for it, so. So we shall see. But Bill, I think you're you're right. I think after the holidays, it would need to meet with the chairman and then either do one-on-ones or small groups. We had done that way. We used to do a coffee and conversation, which was, which was lovely, and the timing of it was usually during the winter months before our budget was back in front of everybody. But we've accelerated that, so we're in front of you. We'll be there in March. So if we want to meet with everybody first time, get them accustomed, you know, kind of familiar with us.
Well, I I think it's a good idea. I'm not a good organizer, and I'm not very good, you know, in in group situations, but I do think it's a sound idea and one that you know, especially people interested on either side, to bring them together. I think only good things could come out of it. All right, thanks, Kelly, and I hope we get to see you again and again. All right, Elizabeth and I have had multiple conversations. She's very good about sort of updating me. And I had my first wellness check precipitated by Elizabeth because my cell phone, which I had replaced this summer, and it shows how technically out of touch I am. I didn't get any calls for a couple of days, and I was just as happy about it. You know, it's it's only time when I looked at it, you know, time and date, that's all I need. So after the morning charge, I was sitting at my desk, and I noticed that the conservation police were coming up the driveway. And two officers got out and rang the door.
And we had good news.
I went to meet them. Mr. Cook, and I said, yes. I said, well, we're happy to see you're alive, and we were, we're conducting a wellness check. So I thought, well, gee whiz. Something I don't know. Elizabeth has been trying to reach you. Pulled out my phone and said, well, there are no messages, but wait a second, there's nothing. So needless to say, I was at the Verizon store later in the morning, being told that this Apple, Apple is having a problem with automatic updates. Even though you think you turn on automatic updates, they're not necessarily working. And therefore, if you don't check your updates, you might just be, you know, the flood might be pulled down.
Which is it?
So that's my president's words. Words to the wise.
Had me worried. I didn't
So I thank you for, my wife got her check out.
Said, aren't you something?
Because they want the police come up the driveway. Something about my kids, something about neighbor.
Horses are out.
So public comments. Members of the public.
There are none.
We're coming up to the consent agenda. So
Yes, I'm ready. Yes, I knew that we approved that agenda. Twelve point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings, twelve point one A, October twenty twenty twenty-two, committee of the whole executive session. Twelve point one B, November fourteen twenty twenty-two, special call meeting. Twelve point one C, November seventeen twenty twenty-two, committee of the whole. Twelve point one D, November twenty-second twenty twenty-two, regular meeting. Twelve point two, acceptance of a treasurer's report. Twelve point two A, acceptance of treasurer's report for November thirtieth twenty twenty-two, as presented. Twelve point three, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh one, a resolution resolution on the rising payment of eleven million four hundred and twelve and eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to BNY Mellon Bank for general obligation refunding bond series two thousand and fourteen. Twelve point four, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh two, a resolution on the rising executive execution of waterman easement agreement with City of Crystal Lake. Transferring easement according to terms and conditions established therein. Twelve point five, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh three. A resolution accepting the word wording change to the district's MBI governing the school's spring wetland and stream mitigation thing, as approved by the US Army Corps of Engineers Interagency Review Team. Twelve point six, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh four. A resolution accepting the proposal for living waters consultants in ink for engineering design and structural plan services for hydraulic restoration of sand wetlands and spring runs at the Bogger Bog Conservation Area for its total cost not to exceed eleven thousand four hundred dollars.
Thank you. And a second, please. Let's do the roll, please.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas, yes. Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes. All right, thank you. Now we go to other board business, and we get into financials. Now, how about you?
Hey, I'm thirteen point one. Approval of bills payable for the month of November twenty twenty-two.
Okay. You have a second? We vote on these individually? Okay, trustees, over the roll, please.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
Okay, thirteen point one eight, did anybody pull anything?
Nobody called me to have a question, but if anybody wants to pull something this evening.
We're in the Christmas spirit.
Yes.
As presented.
Okay, and then I move thirteen point one B, consideration to prove the payment of bills indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending November thirtieth twenty twenty-two.
And did we just do that? We did, we just did that one.
Oh, that's
Yeah.
Oh.
So it's just one motion for
The bills, right.
Oh.
So under the thirteen point one, the way it's listed on this is just kind of a subhead title, and then the actionable items are those thirteen point one B.
My bad, you're done. So turning the page, we come to thirteen point two, and Sean, could you tell us a little bit about the self-committing meetings and and how that transpired?
Sure, yeah, the district went out for RFPs for audit firms for fiscal years twenty-three and four. And we had three submissions to that proposal. And Waterbox Sickich. Name is those three, and so Andy has a a form that he had sent us that you can read the proposals and do a a scorecard based on, you know, based on what we had in the proposal to, well, was submitted. You can, you know, score each one of these, these factors. He split it up nicely. And so we, as, as, as a committee, each scored and had a meeting and went over each of our scores and what's interesting was that we were really all on the same page in terms of one audit firm that felt the proposal matched our RFP almost exactly, so I think we're all happy about the decision. And is Andy on?
Yes, yep. Can you hear me?
Correct me, but that was kind of my ten thousand foot view of what we were doing, but
Can you hear me? Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. My I'm not showing muted. You can't hear me?
No, we can hear you.
We can hear you, okay. All right, great. Um, see, Sean did a pretty good job summarizing it. I guess the, the, the one thing I would say is that the one firm was, you know, really priced itself out and didn't have the same governmental experience, Adherent Casala. So, you know, obviously, they ranked low. It was really between Sickage and Lauderbach and Amen. And ultimately, as Sean explained, you know, Sickage did a really good job, and Lauderbach had a couple, at least one very significant omission from their RFP response. The other thing that really stood out with Sickage is they have a independent quality assurance committee and a director who's dedicated solely to quality assurance. So everything that happens, you know, with the partner and the people in charge of the district's audit or all their clients, you know, they're out in the field, they do all their audit tests and procedures, put everything together before anything's ever released to a client, it goes back to the separate review committee. And it's reviewed by, you know, this independent group. They review the whole thing, the work papers, all the processes and everything, and then the final reports. And I know that meant a lot to me, and I know during the committee, Sean really, trustee Zimmerman really spoke a lot about the value of that. So that really kind of solidified it for everybody, I think. So Sickage is the unanimous recommendation, and we're looking to authorize the executive director to retain Sickage for those do the audit services for fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four.
Well, thank you. Thank you both, and thank Ray also for participating, and
Absolutely.
It's my, been my first experience with auditors and the Sickage representative has always seemed to be very professional and very focused. So I, I think that's wonderful. So Sean, if you would make the resolution, please make a motion for this.
Sure, yeah, make a motion to prove this selection, selection of independent auditors from the crestful proposal of zero eight two two dot oh four dot oh two.
Then do you want to read the resolution that's in the, do you have that? Oh, you probably don't have the annotated because you
There's my Thank you.
Thirteen point two, top one.
Okay.
This is a cheat sheet you got here.
Well, you have to sit at this table.
All right, I make a motion to approve the selection of independent auditors. Resolution twenty-two dash one oh five, resolution authorizing executive director to execute agreement with Sickich of Naperville, Illinois, to serve as the district's independent auditors and perform audit services for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for a fee of twenty-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and fiscal year twenty twenty-four for a fee of twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars. Second.
That's got the second.
Have a question before we vote?
Yes.
Yeah, just curious, the, I don't know the name of that, of the auditor. Is it, is it at all the same person or the same company that did the foundation?
Different.
Different. Did that company apply?
No, they do non-governmental work, and our specific is for government.
Because I thought you were
Yeah, she does a great job. You have to go to work. Is the auditor or does a compilation for the foundation?
Thank you.
Great, okay. Then we've had a second, Christie, so if we can call the roll.
Secretary Thomas, yes. Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
And President Cook.
Yes. So Elizabeth, now thirteen point three, the first reading of amendments to the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual, and you know, perhaps just give us what background you think is relevant to how this is conducted over the years and involves over the years.
I would be happy, happy to do that. And I do have Jenny Hyder, who is our human resources manager, and this is one of the areas that she's tasked with. And so one of her roles is to keep our personnel policy manual when it's all put together. It's this booklet that we use is how to, once the board approves the policies, this is kind of our handbook of what we go by to ensure that we're all working from the same score sheet here. And it's, it's evolved over the years, but every once a year, between federal changes that occur at the Capitol or things in Springfield legislation, we need to go through and update things that happen by law that are required for us to do. So we do that. And then while we're reviewing it, we also go through and we find other areas, maybe we've had situations, you know, over the year that we need better clarification on. And so we work through that, and we bring that all together. We go through for those that are new on our policies, for personnel policies, and then with our comprehensive policies, we do a two-reading process. So tonight, what you have is a first reading. And again, that's just the way And again, that's just the way we've done this, that way we can talk about it, there's changes, we would then, if we have concurrence, then we will bring it back in, in January for second reading and the adoption of that and then it's final. All of the materials we do then, not only do we work with the Dermah, who's our risk management agency, we pick up policy samples that they may have written that they're using with their other clients, so we're consistent, again, for interpretation of how we're looking at things. And then we also, once it's put together, we send it to Andrew Payne, our attorney, who he and his team review it to make sure that it's in compliance and all the things are covered. So we go through, that process has been done with everything here. So not all policies have been modified in your board summary, we listed the items that we did go through and make tweaks, we provided you in your board packet a red line version and then what it would look like with all the changes being made. There was some general cleanup for pronouns, so we did clean that up, we tried to get most of that, the first go around, I think we did the remainder of cleanup. And there were some new policies that were added, you know, tape recording. Now that everybody's got smartphones and things in the workplace, it's important to have a policy on recordings, so that's new. We needed one on work areas, again, for remote work environments, again, just a new place that we're working through, so we wanted to make sure that was in good shape. Telecommuting, you know, needed some additional language based on coming out of COVID, so we kind of cleaned that up. And then the family bereavement leave, that would used to be known as the formerly child bereavement and bereavement leave, so we just kind of moved and changed that. And then we did have a transgender policy with our DEI group and working and with what we've seen out there, we changed that with council to a gender inclusive policy, again. Again, I think it's more appropriate and better language and then a transition plan, a support plan that would be in place so that we can work with employee that is, you know, having the support that's necessary with those changes, so those, those are new. And then the vacation, the vacation, holiday, we did go through. It's been one of those areas and we did identify that and that is a request that we're looking to add three additional holidays to our offering to our employees. We've looked at what the county is doing and so I did give you a tally and so the county has incorporated days, we've had only fourteen and the county with the personal days and even the fourteen includes what we have as our personal days had seventeen. So we're proposing to be on par with that, that we had three additional holidays for our employees, we are countywide employees and working with our diversity, equity, inclusion, the three days that we looked at adding was Martin Luther King Junior's Day in January, Juneteenth in June, and then Columbus Indigenous Peoples' Day in October. There are, as far as exactly the days that the county has, they do a few other things, they don't do Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. We do that, but they are, but they have like Good Friday, spring holiday, so it's just an extra, but the numbers as far as what is available by adding the three, that would put us on par, so we're proposing that that be the case. One thought on that, if the board would be supportive and in agreement with that, we can discuss it, is this would go in effect with the January approval, the Martin Luther King Day is the day before, I mean, so if we wanted to kind of tip that in and do it before the board could authorize us to do that as a holiday, should you, should you choose to do that. Jenny, anything else that you wanted to add? You did a great job of kind of reviewing all of these.
No, I mean, I think you pretty much captured everything and again, with the evolving changes in laws and everything, we, any of our policies that had the protected category wording, your equal employment opportunity policy to harassment policies. If you've heard about the Crown Act, that's been in the news this last year, and those policies now cover that, which are trades associated with race and then also we had a conviction record, so it kind of goes to show again, how we're keeping up with things or keeping up with the laws. This document is very fluid because there are always laws that are changing out there, so and this is just an example how they continuously change and why we always probably bring this back on an annual basis for updates, so other than that, I think you've covered everything else, Elizabeth.
Any questions, I guess?
Well, I have a question and perhaps naive, is Juneteenth a federal holiday at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, likewise at the state level.
It just became that.
Yeah, I believe it's not a banking holiday, but it's a federal.
Okay.
Minor distinction.
Okay. That's my only question, any discussion, comments? So forth.
I have not made it through all the changes yet.
Right, well, this is just the.
We were talking about the holidays.
Well, right, but I mean, it's a whole ball of wax here, but yes, so. As I think if I understood correctly, this is the first reading, so we have time to delve into it. And it will come up for a second reading and so it will be open for further discussion at that time.
If there was any substantive, you know, obviously, rules work through or that it has everything, if there is, you know, how we're handling things, then they're going to fall ahead of the meeting, we can go through that, that way we can be prepared, you know, at the January meeting. But as I said, most of it, you know, the two new policies I said, if you read this, the front sheet says new, so tape recording, work policy, you know, those are new, most other things are just cleanup and it's just a matter of what is required legalized to.
You need a consensus today for the Martin Luther King Day so that the or just if we're not going to officially vote on this until the day after.
So if there was a consensus and the board wanted to advance that ahead of that, yeah, if there was a consensus this evening to do that, we could take that action this evening based on the first reading on the agenda.
Does anyone feel that they need more time to think about that or? I'm uncomfortable with the, with the idea of our employees having Martin Luther King Junior Day as a holiday in the calendar year nineteen or twenty twenty three. So. Can I push back on that?
This is for that one.
Well, yeah, yes, because they, they, well, I think, well.
This one's going to be before the next meeting.
Yeah, this is the only one that calls before the next meeting, so just from an administrative point of view, if we greenlight it now, then, then they have their but everything else will remain in limbo, so to speak, or awaiting our approval in January and if as you go through the manual, you have something that requires further information or that you really think is not out of place, then I would suggest bringing it up to Elizabeth ahead of the next meeting so that we can sort it out.
What we're thinking out of a meeting, and before we vote on, on the Martin Luther King Day, I guess, a couple of comments, one is that, that's been, it's pretty common, I'm seeing that in union contracts, I mean, they've been pushing it for a long time and it's been, you know, that's something that's been agreed to, you know, time and time again. By adding three, you know, it really helps differentiate, help us, you know, on the competitive side to both retain employees and recruit employees. We know that we're behind the ball in terms of salary, this is one of those fringe benefits that really helps us that, you know, be a more attractive employer, so I'm supportive of it, even though it'd be a unilateral gift to the union side. I'm just like to get something for something, but in this case, I'm all right.
All right, so then Elizabeth, I think there is consensus that you program Martin Luther King Junior Day for twenty twenty three and the remainder of it will be, you'll just follow the protocol for second reading and voting for it.
That, that's, that's wonderful, I thank you, and I think truly it's a competitive market, that's key, we have to compete with what we can with culture and those types of things. The other thing that, a question that was asked was how does this impact our programs and activities, and so we do have prepared, because there are some team members that have to work on a holiday, but then they would take the next day as a, a holiday, so it's recognized because we have the Wildlife Resource Center, right, they have to feed the wildlife, our law enforcement has to come through and, and they have to keep our sites safe. You know, our bargaining groups, they have to come out and, you know, on a snow event day, they may have to be called in to remove snow. Our education staff, they have decide to say, hey, it's in the best interest, they have a program on a particular day, but they have that expression, but it's just allowing that.
And from a cost standpoint, I mean, Andy may disagree with me, but from my perspective, it's really no added cost, if you figure the cost of employee per year, even their hourly, you know, you're paying the same amount a year's time. The work still has to be done and, you know, they'll do it the next day, so unless you have to backfill for somebody and pay them overtime, that's really the only time that you have added cost, again, not from an accounting sense, but from a general management sense.
Well, good, okay, well, thank you all for focusing on that and I think we we've moved it, moved the ball forward.
Yeah.
All right. So I think next up is thirteen point four. And this is the amendment to the pricing schedule on stream and wetland credits for school springs, wetland and stream mitigation bank. So I I think we have had some discussion of this and perhaps Elizabeth and, and Ed can put the icing on the cake and, and we can vote on this resolution.
Can I talk a little bit about the research?
Sure, we did research local banks and where we have banks that are with public agencies, it's usually pretty easy, it's a professional courtesy to go back and forth and get information, it's a bit more difficult with private banks, because it's a private enterprise. But we did enough research to feel that where the market's at right now would warrant an increase in the price for our wetland and stream credits. Credits fluctuate based on, on two factors really. The availability of credits in a particular area of the country and where development is going that would require those credits to be purchased and that could include commercial development, residential development, road development. So we did as thorough a look as we could and we think that, given the circumstances in our region right now and what credits are going for, that our bank could support these prices and still have demand be okay now. A year from now, who knows, you know, you have to follow what's going on with the money. And at this point, we do not have wetland credits to sell, we have sold out, we're waiting for additional prices to be certified. We do have some stream credits and we expect that we will get some more of those going into the next year. So this would affect future inquiries.
Just remind us where we're currently priced.
We were priced at ninety six thousand dollars an acre for wetland credits and six hundred dollars a foot for stream credit. Where we would move up to seven eighty and one twenty four.
Any discussion questions for Ed or Elizabeth on this?
And the, the amusement that we gave, that's on the, the earlier price, right?
Also discounted.
Yes, we discounted to our friends at the coming. Okay.
Thank you. I'm there watching the other.
All right, so. Who would like to, should we make this into a motion, Elizabeth?
Yes, and I, the officers have the detailed proposed motion. Yep, amendment to pricing schedule on the stream and wetland credits for school springs, wetland and stream mitigation bank, resolution number twenty two dash one oh six. A resolution amending the price schedule for stream and wetland credits for the school spring stream and wetland mitigation bank at a rate of one hundred and twenty four thousand eight hundred per acre for wetland credits and seven hundred and eighty dollars per linear foot for a stream effective January first, twenty twenty three. And to authorize the executive director to adjust the pricing schedule and all bank sales documents.
And I'll second that if I may. So. Okay, Christie called the role.
Jesse Everard.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Jesse Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasure Prince.
Yes.
Secretary Tom.
Yes.
And President Cook.
Yes. All right, thank you. So we now have the executive director's report.
Couple of different things here, so thank you to those that joined us for Brad Woodson's retirement event last Friday, it was lovely, it was lovely to have everybody come together to celebrate his thirty one years of service with the district, I know I'm kind of bittersweet. I made some, some wonderful remarks, which I missed because I arrived and didn't know, but I heard they were wonderful, which they were recorded and some others that, that did, Brad was touched. We will do a resolution in his honor, he will be with us during the committee of the whole in January, but he had to back, you know, to Iowa. And so he will leave that for that. We also, as they're saying goodbye to Amber Ross, who is education program coordinator, and she is leading us to go to the King County Forest Preserve District as a naturalist there, so we wish her well and she's done a great job, she was just about it four years with us at the district. We, our landscapes is out, winter registration, a lot of wonderful programs to take part in for the upcoming year. And Dermah, I did just, we got a letter today from them that they issued the district a fifteen hundred dollars, so Jenny, you may not even know this, a cash incentive. And again, the sharing is correspondence, so their safety coordinator brothers involved with our loss control effort, so they appreciate our commitment to safety and loss and so they kind of give a kickback there that then we can use the programs or activities or things like that, so that's good news and I just want to wish everybody a very happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And thank you again for, for all you do for the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Well, all right, do any trustees have anything else that they would like to report on at this time?
I got one thing, Farm Bureau, I attended the Illinois Farm Bureau annual meeting and the counter, Dan Volkers, he submitted the bioreactor as a local affairs project and they got recognized, they got, got an award for that. And of course you had another, at our, we had a meeting last Wednesday and same guy got up again complaining about the bees. I said, bees, oh, I says, well, there's a public comment, you know, that's what it's for. I'm going to write a letter. That doesn't do any good, you got to show up.
Is he adjacent to district property?
Lives over by home, so. And he was, he was. County over there too, they, somebody else. Some of them come from Kane County, so.
All right. Let's see, I'm, I'm a notification and Arnold Magnetics was granted an extension on their application for stack, what goes up, the smoke stack. So the Illinois EPA has stretched that out a little bit. As they stretched out most everything else.
Think that's ever gonna, anything's ever gonna happen then?
How?
Besides spending a lot of money.
Yeah, well, yes, I, I mean, you send your kids to college and you hope for the best.
Well, I know, but I mean, seems like they just keep.
Yeah, they have deep pockets and they know how to play the game and.
They've been, they've done it before.
Yes, and they continue to do it. And I don't know what. Well. If you believed in conspiracies, you could probably come up with some nefarious scheme that, that allows them to persist out of compliance. I certainly don't have any facts to support that, but.
What you're thinking.
Um, what you think, you know?
I, 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 it makes sense to me, but okay. Um, moving right along. Uh. I think executive session is next. Oh, public comments. Anyone from Arnold though?
I don't see any hands raised.
I don't see anything.
All right, so next, uh. Do we officially adjourn or do we just?
We need to have a motion going to executive. Session.
I'll second this.
To read.
Oh, consideration of a motion to go into executive session pursuant to. C one personnel, two C two collective bargaining. On review of post-session meetings of the Open Meetings Act five IL CS one twenty slash one. Whatever ET SEQ.
Second.
Besides.
Yeah. Christie Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Down?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
President Prince?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey. Home, happy holidays. There will be an action after executive session. Um, and so uh. We mentioned a lot back on, but I can't tell you how long it will be.
All right, so we're uh back in session, uh, regular meeting, December twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-two and. We're going to uh consider motion nineteen point one.
We do roll call.
Yes.
Do we need to read it?
I, I need to do a roll call. President Cook?
Yes, I'm here.
Vice President Down?
Here.
President Prince?
Present.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Christie Everard?
Here.
And trustee Zimmerman.
Present.
And now we're gonna have nineteen point one. And Chris, if you.
Consideration of motion adopting resolution twenty-two one oh seven, resolution authorizing the. Execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local One Fifty. Public Employees Division and the Kennedy County Conservation District Department of Eagle Creek. One oh two to the March thirty-third, twenty twenty-five.
And uh, second please. Second, Linda. And the rule.
President Prince?
Yes.
Christie Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Down?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
And President Cook?
Yes. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn? I'll second that.
Okay.
Right.
Merry Christmas.
You have to do the rule. Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Christie Everard?
Yeah.
Vice President Down?
Yes.
President Prince?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes, indeed.
Now you did say that. Christmas man. Fifty sixteen, yeah, well done. Merry Christmas. We have.
Good night.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy holidays.